Okay, one second.
All right.
Recording in progress.
You can begin now. Thank you.
Thank you, IT. Good afternoon, everybody. Today is Tuesday, August 16th. The meeting of the Seattle City Council will come to order. It is 2:01, and I am Deborah Juarez. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Swann.
Present.
Councilmember Strauss.
Present.
Councilmember Hobald.
Here.
Member Lewis.
Present.
Councilmember Morales.
Here.
Councilmember Musqueda.
Present.
Councilmember Peterson.
Present.
Councilmember Nelson.
Present.
And Council President Juarez.
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you. Before we begin, we have a couple internal matters to manage. So at this time, Councilmember Strauss.
Yes, I'd like to rescind my request to be used for today's meeting.
Thank you. If there's no objection, councilmembers, excuse absence for today will be rescinded. I do not hear or see any objections. So Councilmember Strauss, your excuse absence for today is rescinded. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on into our agenda, on to presentations, Councilmember Morales has a proclamation proclaiming August 21st, Pacific Northwest Black Pride Day, and Councilmember Morales will first present the proclamation, and then I will open up the floor for comments from our other council members. After other council members' comments, we will suspend the rules to allow our guest, my understanding it's David Carrato from Pocan, to accept the proclamation and provide some comments. So with that, Councilmember Morales, you are recognized.
Thank you, Council President. David, if you have comments that you would like to make, Stephen Sawyer, you can please come up to the table here. Okay, so yes, thank you. Colleagues, we have a proclamation proclaiming August 21st, 2022 as Pacific Black Pride Month, Pacific Northwest Black Pride Day. Excuse me. I'm going to read just a little bit of the proclamation and then invite Mr. Sawyer to come. So whereas Autry Bell, Olivet Foster, Bishop Stephen Sawyer, along with a team of community leaders at People of Color Against AIDS Network, an organization that was founded over 35 years ago to build powerful and uplifting relationships with all ethnic organizations and allies, also founded Pacific Northwest Black Pride in 2018, and whereas Pacific Northwest Black Pride applied for and was approved as a 501(c)(3) community organization in 2022, and seeks to deepen its work in and for a growing LGBTQIA African American community in Washington State, we are honored to have Mr. Sawyer here and to acknowledge the important work of the organization and the community members who have been leading the charge here. So thank you so much. We will be presenting this as well on Sunday at the event at Jimi Hendrix Park. But if you would like to make some comments, please, please do so.
Thank you, and we want to thank the council for their continued support as we do this great work. Like you said, this foundation, this organization was really founded through Pocan, who has a long, rich history in community, really serving communities of color. We know that particularly around African American men are most affected by HIV, but also our LGBT African American youth are most affected by homelessness and housing issues. And so really, Pacific Northwest Black Pride is seeking to continue its partnership with the city to address these issues. Yes, we do it in a fun way where our community can come out and have fun about it, but it really is about addressing issues in our community, and so we are here to serve. I have with me today a host of our committee, our planning committee, and so I want to thank them for all of the work that they do and community around this, and we just want to continue our partnership. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Welcome, everyone.
Councilmember Morales, so I'm going to open the floor, and then I was going to suspend the rules, and then if you have any other future guests, is that, can we do it that way?
Yes, my apologies, Council President.
Okay, it's all right. No, I didn't want to interrupt him. I, you know, I'm trying to be, show some kindness and humility and dignity, and just, I think when people come to public comment, that we should give people space and just allow them to feel safe here to say what they need to say. And so I'm going to go ahead and go with the procedural piece, then I'm going to hand it off to you to introduce if you have any more guests. First, are there any comments from our colleagues regarding the proclamation that Councilmember Morales is putting forward to us today? Okay, I do not see any, any hands raised. So with that, if there's no objection, the council rules will be suspended for any more guests to accept the proclamation and provide any additional remarks. Hearing and seeing no objections, the council rules are indeed suspended. And with that, Councilmember Morales, did you have any other guests that you would like to introduce for your proclamation before we move on to our agenda?
Anybody else want to chime in? Okay. Well, we can do it afterward. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
All right. If they want a photo, Council President, my apologies. I'm actually in chamber, and so do I take a moment to do that now, or do I?
Yes. Actually, Councilmembers, I'm so glad you brought that up. I had it written in the margins, absolutely. And I just want to say one thing about Pocan and the group. I, when you said 35 years, I feel old because I remember I helped put that together, and they asked me to sit on their first board, and I couldn't. So yes, I feel very old. Thank you. If you want to move over to your photo op period right now, I think it'd be great for all of us to see it. So go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I'll come down off the dais.
That is a good-looking group. Wow. Wonderful. Congratulations.
Okay, thank you for indulging us, everyone.
Absolutely. Thank you for bringing this forward, Councilmember Morales. And thank you, everybody that came, particularly all the representatives. It means a lot to us as elected officials, and certainly for the viewing public, to see all the good work that you do. So thank you again, Councilmember Morales. Okay, so moving on on our agenda to public comment. As you know, we have a hybrid system where we have people in chambers and people who call in. And so today, we have, Madam Clerk, please correct me if I'm wrong, we have 27 remote people that have called in, and my understanding is that we have seven people, seven folks that have signed up in person, correct?
Actually, remote is now 28, and we still have seven signed up for in-person.
Okay, so we will take the in-person speakers first, and they will have one minute, and then we will move to the 28 people that have called in, and they will each have one minute as well. And with that, Madam Clerk, I'm going to hand it over to you for the recording and the instructions for public comment.
Hello, Seattle. We are the Emerald City, the city of flowers and the city of goodwill, built on indigenous land, the traditional territory of the Coast Salis peoples. The Seattle City Council welcomes remote public comment and is eager to hear from residents of our city. If you would like to be a speaker and provide a verbal public comment, you may register two hours prior to the meeting via the Seattle City Council website. Here's some information about the public comment proceedings. Speakers are called upon in the order in which they registered on the council's website. Each speaker must call in from the phone number provided when they registered online and use the meeting ID and passcode that was emailed upon confirmation. If you did not receive an email confirmation, please check your spam or junk mail folders. A reminder, the speaker meeting ID is different from the general listen line meeting ID provided on the agenda. Once a speaker's name is called, the speaker's microphone will be unmuted, and an automatic prompt will say, "The host would like you to unmute your microphone." That is your cue, that is your turn to speak. At that time, you must press star six. You would then hear a prompt of, "You are unmuted." Be sure your phone is unmuted on your end so that you will be heard. As a speaker, you should begin by stating your name and the item that you are addressing. A chime will sound when 10 seconds are left in your allotted time, as a gentle reminder to wrap up your public comments. At the end of the allotted time, your microphone will be muted, and the next speaker registered will be called. Once speakers have completed providing public comment, please disconnect from the public comment line and join us by following the meeting via Seattle Channel Broadcast or through the listening line option listed on the agenda. The council reserves the right to eliminate public comment if the system is being abused or if the process impedes the council's ability to conduct its business on behalf of residents of the city. Any offensive language that is disruptive to these proceedings or that is not focused on an appropriate topic as specified in council rules may lead to the speaker being muted by the presiding officer. Our hope is to provide an opportunity for productive discussions that will assist our orderly consideration of issues before the council. The public comment period is now open, and we will begin with the first speaker on the list. Please remember to press star six after you hear the prompt of, "You have been unmuted." Thank you, Seattle.
We will now move to the in-person public commenters. Once your name is called, please approach either microphone and state your name and the item to which you are addressing. The first public commenter for in-person public comment is Eileen Fortgang.
So am I allowed one minute or two minutes? I'd like to do two.
One minute.
Hi, I'm Eileen Fortgang with Humane Voters of Washington. I have in writing that the aquarium can't, if the aquarium can't find sharks and stingrays from a facility that breathes them, then they will take them from the South Pacific. The proposed shark tank and tiny fake, can you get closer to the mic, please? Okay, well, can I start over then? Hi, my name is Eileen Fortgang, and I'm with Humane Voters of Washington. I have in writing that if the aquarium can't find the sharks and stingrays from a facility that breathes them, then they will take them from the waters of the South Pacific. The proposed shark tank and tiny fake ocean will cause immeasurable suffering. These intelligent beings struggle to survive in tanks because whether captured or bred, they retain all their wild instincts. We have a technology to provide non-live experiences without the suffering and premature death. The Aquarium of Hawaii uses technology to give the visitor an inside look at the complex lives of Maui's humpback whales. This is impossible with our outmoded aquarium. We are asking you to withhold $20 million from the aquarium until the ill-conceived shark tank is replaced with a non-live experience. Anything less diminishes our humanity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Peter Manning.
Hi, my name is Peter Manning with Black Excellence in Cannabis. I'm sorry. Yeah, I want you to get that title on, please. Okay. Hi, my name is Peter Manning. I'm with Black Excellence in Cannabis. I am speaking today because of the rhetoric that was displayed in the media lately pertaining to black-owned stores as being somehow drug trafficking and/or child abuse or selling drugs to children. It's funny that when we talk about inclusion of black or brown people, that this element of cannabis becomes highly illegal. However, the white people have been doing it for the last eight years, moving tons. They've made more money than the cartel in Mexico have here. It's $3.7 billion this state of Washington has raked in. That's serious drug trafficking. Just because black people are at the door currently now asking for inclusion in the all-white cannabis industry, we're being labeled as drug traffickers or potential drug traffickers or potential people harming children. We expected something from our city government and our state government, some pushback. Something needs to be said to these rights, these racist statements made to us pertaining to us inequity. That needs to be addressed by this council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mike Assa.
Good afternoon, council members. Allow me to introduce myself. My name is Mike Assa with Emerald City Collective, second black-owned medical dispensary in 2010 and first downtown Seattle Medical Cannabis Dispensary. We are the cannabis pioneers. We still are here. We were protected under city ordinance 123661 in 2011. July 2016, we and many other black-owned medical dispensaries were unjustly closed down by the city of Seattle. We stand together with Black Excellence in Cannabis, who were very instrumental in the creation of passing of House Bill 2870, social equity in cannabis. There should be no question of Emerald City Collective and Black Excellence in Cannabis are in full support of social equity in cannabis. Of course we are. We appreciate the support from the mayor and the city council regarding cannabis social equity. We are in full support of cannabis employees' rights protections. We are not in support of Amendment 1 to Cannabis Equity Ordinance 120391. We are simply requesting Amendment Section 10 not be taken into consideration. I find the racist comments from local and national media regarding social equity applicants being drug traffickers and selling to kids is racist. This is an example of white supremacy causing more trauma to black and brown community. Emerald City Collective never sold to kids. We never had any city.
Thank you, sir. Your time's up. Thank you. The next speaker is Alex Zimmerman. The next speaker is Alex Zimmerman.
Zihai, my dirty Nazi Gestapo Fuhrer. My name is Alex Zimmerman, and I want to speak about new agenda what as you come today, 32065, condemn everything for elector official. I remember a few years ago, Council Moskita bring on new rules. What is everybody in city calls as Alex Zimmerman rules. It's me, rules. With this rule, you give me 12 trespasses for 1200 day, and I go for election for last 10 year, every year. So who are you? Ah, new rules for who? For Moskita? Another nine Nazi who's here? So right now, you can do in everything what is Hitler did in 1934. Bring everybody to concentration camp, and this exactly what you did. A new rule, a new Nazi rule, what is totally cut us right freedom of speech in us opinion. Stand up, America. Clean this dirty temper from this Nazi.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dionne Calvery and Breon Cobry. Our next speaker is Dionne Cobry and Breon Cobry.
Good afternoon. My name is Breon Cobry. I was the first African American man to have a medical marijuana collective here in the state of Washington and in Seattle. And what happened to us as African Americans in this industry was atrocious. And the thing about it was, you know, being from Seattle, and at that time, the mayor of Seattle, Mike Jen, McGinn, whatever his name was, he was, you know, promoting it and things like that. And then for us to take our own blood and sweat and establish these businesses to have them taken away from us just was just, it's unimaginable. You don't even think that stuff exists in America today, but it does. And as progressive as this state wants to be or acts like it is, we got a lot of work that we must do. So I'm going to thank the Black Excellence in Cannabis and everybody for giving me the opportunity to come up here and speak with you guys. All right, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Robert Radford. Robert Radford.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Robert Radford. I'm here on behalf of one of the seven commissioners to extend a presence. The Commission on Neighborhoods is the specific commission that I'm referring to. This is my first council meeting. I just wanted to say greetings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marguerite Richard.
Yes, my name is Marguerite Richard. I'm from Seattle. And right now, I want to say that I'm very sorry to hear of the passing of Shalise Montgomery, the tax lady from the Central District. She will come down here. I think Eddie Rye, they were connected some kind of way, but yeah, here we are again. But I'm here because of my total freedom and my rights being violated repeatedly from people that basically they don't know me, but they have every right to do something to disrupt my life. All I want is my total freedom. All that other stuff is irrelevant unless we can walk and go and sit down on the first floor without being persecuted. I didn't hear nobody up in here. Back in the 60s, they would have been rattling everything up in this camp, huh? About you discriminating against indigenous black people, huh? When you gonna quit that? Okay, that's what I'm talking, time expired. Next time, give me my two minutes, Miss Juarez. You know what I mean?
Our next speaker is Aiden Carroll. Aiden Carroll.
No new cops. Good afternoon. SPD has been on a slowdown strike for a long time to make you look bad. They think, they say they believe you have taken away their responsibility, ability to fulfill their responsibilities. Not a conspiracy theory. This is what they tell voters all the time who ask them for help. Frank Blevin and Mike Swann and Bruce Harrell thinks you don't vote for these hiring bonuses. They can make you lose next year's elections. Let's call their bluff. The voters don't want more cops. They want certain visible problems addressed, and they want to be able to see that you're doing it. But there's better ways to deal with bike theft and break-ins, for example. We know this. You don't need a badge and a gun to investigate the scene of a crime. You don't need a badge and a gun to supervise a protest or to be a supervising camera movement, armed for mediation, although those shouldn't exist. I would really like to know why the.
Resolution.
What? Sorry. What happened with, with Councilmember Lewis's bill for sanction decampments? For the same reason, you wouldn't demolish an apartment building because some of us committed a crime. We need an accountability process for if there's warrant to prison in an encampment or RV that are causing a problem. We need creative solutions. Don't involve caving to the law and order Trump Nixon lobby.
Thank you. We will now move to the remote speakers.
Madam Clerk, can we hold up a minute? First, I want to apologize. I did not realize I was off mute when I was looking for a document, but I am going to, at this time, take a point of council president privilege as officer of this public hearing. Because we have some unusual circumstances, I am going to allow Rep. Pastor Kerry Anderson, and I understand he's ready to speak. He was over at King County in regards to a resolution that Councilwoman Musqueda is going to be offering us today, which is Agenda Item Number One. Normally, we don't take these matters out of order, but I am going to allow him the opportunity and the privilege because this speaks to what Pastor Kerry Anderson endured, and I wanted to honor and respect that. So that's what I would like to do. So I would like to take Pastor Kerry Anderson first. My understanding is he's standing by. Reverend?
I am. I, I am right here, and let me thank the Madam Chair, and let me commend Councilwoman Teresa Musqueda for taking a brave step and a brave move, valiant move, in presenting a resolution against hate crimes against elected officials and candidates running for office. I know I only have a minute, just 50 seconds in it, but let me say, when I was shot by a drive-by BB gun shooter, BB guns kill four people a year. I'm thankful that I'm not one of the four, but even through the experience, I'm not deterred and I'm not undaunted. And so I'm so thankful for the city council to embrace and engage this resolution, to stand behind candidates of color, candidates that are putting themselves out there. And I appreciate this opportunity. As a pastor first AME church for the past 18-plus years and in ministry for over 38 years as a senior pastor, I never thought that I would be shot by doing public service and trying to make a difference. I've been involved and engaged in de-escalating crime and trying to dismantle racism. Will continue to do so as a public servant. But I want to encourage those that have a desire to run for public office. Don't be afraid to put yourself out there. I found out that even though people are experiencing and expressing hate, we can't fight hate with hate. We've got to fight hate with love. And so as we move forward through this electoral process, through the mid-year and midterm elections, I'm encouraging people of color, young people of color, women, to go out there. Put yourself out there. Let your voice be known. Let your position be heard and stand with a fearless disposition, knowing that right is right and right will always guide you into truth. And so again, thank you, council, for allowing me this opportunity. I'm just getting off of the King County Council, who presented a similar resolution. And so these are brave steps, and I appreciate this opportunity and this time to address the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Anderson. And with that, Madam Clerk, can we go ahead and start our public comment for those that have called in? And again, it is one minute. Thank you.
Speakers will now be called in the order registered. If you have not registered to speak, you can still sign up before the public comment period has concluded. By registering for public comment online for remote public comment or for in-person public comment, please sign up on the signup sheet located near the podium in council chambers. Our first remote public speaker is Howard Gale.
Good afternoon. Howard Gale, SeattleStop.org. Today, you will be voting on spending $1.8 million in an attempt to improve police recruitment. You're choosing to put more money into harming our community by recruiting folks with money instead of any actual change that would signal to potential police recruits that this is a city that wants to move away from traditional police culture. Money alone may well attract the cops we do not want. For example, King County Sheriff's Department has for years offered preference points, not just for military experience in second language, which Seattle does, but it also offers preference points for community service work. Despite a similar plan stipulated in the 2017 police accountability legislation, Seattle has failed to implement this. Or how about us signaling to potential recruits that there actually exists an accountability system in Seattle that will reward them for calling out bad behavior instead of abandoning them to the blue wall of silence, which still dominates the SPD? Money will only make a bad situation worse and papers over your failure to demand change.
Thank you. Our next remote speaker is Matt Offenbacher.
Hi, council members. I'm a District 3 resident and a small business owner in District 2. I'm calling to I'm calling to urge you to vote no on the police recruitment and retention bill. There is zero evidence that reducing the number of SPD officers increases crime rates. On the other hand, there's abundant evidence that increasing the size and reach of SPD increases the harm done to communities of color, to poor people, people without homes, and those with mental illnesses. So don't throw good money after bad to prop up a police organization that has shown time and again that it's unable to keep us safe. It's long past time to put some urgency and some serious funding behind alternative crisis responses. We're entering into a hard budget season, and you'll have to make some hard decisions. Please lead us in the right direction by rejecting this poorly conceived bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is BJ Last.
Hello, my name is BJ Last. I'm a Ballard resident and small business owner. I'm calling on the Council to reject CD 120389 and instead invest SPD salary savings in the community. Council members are serious about being fiscally responsible in passing data-driven legislation. They'll reject this bill. This bill is deeply fiscally irresponsible. It takes SPD from an $8 million budget surplus, which could be used to reduce the massive budget gap the city is facing next year to protect the budget deficit for SPD, meaning Council will have to give SPD more money at the end of the year, increasing the budget gap, and the bill increases expenses in future years by adding headcount and increasing SPD personnel costs. The bill ignores decades of data showing the size of the police force has no impact on crime. And what reduces crime is investing in community to decrease inequality and meet people's basic needs. This isn't surprising when you acknowledge that SPD's own data shows that 80% of the calls they respond to are noncriminal. If multiple actually wants to improve public safety, they should invest SPD's salary savings in the community instead of throwing the money away on bonuses, which are guaranteed to have no impact on public safety, because there's no...
Our next speaker is Brian Clark.
Council, I'm a homeowner, Council, I'm a homeowner in Ballard, calling today to ask you to vote no on increasing funding for cops. Our police department is internationally infamous. They spent a whole summer teargassing Capitol Hill. They are failing to hold themselves accountable, and the city has failed to force them to account, despite many years of brutal police violence. In summer 2020, many of you committed to shifting funds away from the police to other city services that could serve as alternates to policing, and yet that shift hasn't really happened at scale. Cops have quit, calls to them are down, and yet somehow you're offering something like $30,000 as a signup bonus for more cops here. What has the SPD done to earn your trust? Why should a cop be offered what for many other roles in the city would be a third or half a year's wages just for signing up? Take this funding and send it to social services and police alternatives. SPD doesn't have a recruiting problem. They have a corruption problem. Stop lavishing so much praise on them. Stop patting yourself on your back for declaring August Black Pride Month if you're then just going to go turn and dump a bunch of funding into SPD. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Julia Buck.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Julia Buck, and I'm a resident of District Six in Seattle. I am also calling on Council to reject Council Bill 120389. Councilmember Herbold, the sponsor of this bill, has lamented that Seattle is lagging behind creating community-based policing alternatives that have proved successful in cities like Denver and Albuquerque, and yet is sponsoring a bill to make sure that this $1.6 million bonus stays with SPD in order to do hiring bonuses. Hiring bonuses have not been found to be a, a inhibiting factor to SPD recruitment. That's from the executive analysis of the 2021 Hiring Bonus Program, and they have a limited impact on retention. In addition, there was a hiring bonus program in 2019 that has never been analyzed by anyone. Please vote no. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Drew Bachelor.
Hello, I'm Drew Bachelor, asking you to vote no on 12389, 120389. In November of 2021, the City Council approved a statement of legislative intent requesting that the SPD addressed a list of call types the SPD-commissioned Nick Jr. report recommended could be handled by alternative non-police responses. Diverting these nonviolent, noncriminal calls would have resulted in an immediate 12% reduction in the calls SPD is responsible for, a percentage comparable to the SPD's claimed staffing shortage. Diverting these calls would also allow us to begin investing in alternative response programs, which have been proven successful in other cities. The SLI deadline came in April and then again in June, and the SPD refuses to deliver this information. This is the most basic application of police accountability. Do the job the people of Seattle elected you to do. Hold the SPD accountable. No more money for SPD. Demand they comply with the SLI and let us start investing in new, effective approaches to public safety that don't harm the most marginalized members of our community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sandy Labowitz.
Hi, concerning Seattle Aquarium's last-minute request for a $20 million loan, I do not want our tax dollars being loaned to the Seattle Aquarium. This giant tank that they are asking for the money for is not the way to educate these people in time of better technology. We should be containing, we should not be containing beautiful inhabitants of our seas in tanks where they cannot live as nature intended, enjoying life instead of merely existing in a tank, which is nothing more than a tiny prison sale to the sharks, stingray, and other sea life. So much more could be learned from the use of state-of-the-art technology, 3D theater, holograms, computer-generated imaging, et cetera, instead of this tank. Given the Seattle Aquarium a last-minute $20 million along with our tax dollars will just reinforce their old outdated ways of thinking that entertainment with captive animals is the way to teach. At this time, $20 million should be used in a way that will hurt, that will benefit our hurting people and businesses of Seattle.
Our next speaker is Dani Hoffman.
Hello, Council. My name is Dani Hoffman, and I live in District Five in the Greenwood neighborhood. I'm here today to provide comment regarding the SPD hiring incentives. On more occasions than I can count in just the past year, I personally witnessed SPD behaving recklessly in my neighborhood and surrounding neighborhoods, putting our community members in serious danger. Specifically, this has looked like SPD cars cutting people off in traffic without the use of lights or sirens, speeding on side streets, many of which do not have sidewalks, not allowing buses to merge onto roadways, not yielding for pedestrians, speeding in general, driving and blocking safe streets and bike lanes. They not only create unsafe situations for the community, but this behavior exemplifies the clear attitude that they are not here to serve or protect, but rather to harass or bully. On several occasions, I have seen three to six squad cars, some with multiple officers, respond to a singular person loitering or shouting in a parking lot. We don't need more officers or for them to make even more money, and we certainly don't need even more people who clearly care more about power tripping and control than they do serving and protecting to be attracted to these positions of power. SPD is already using their power, means, and positionality in ways that misuse funding and put the community at risk.
Our next speaker is Marla Katz.
Hello. Can I speak now?
Yes, you can.
Hi, Councilmembers. I'm Marla Katz. Please vote no to Seattle Aquarium's request for $20 million for a shark tank. Councilmember Peterson voted no, asking how can we afford to give $20 million from the Real Estate Excise Tax Fund when we have serious infrastructure needs? The tank's budget began at $113 million, and the cost is now $160. In a global climate and water crisis, there's no justification for a tank that requires so much energy and water. This conflicts with the city's policy to use energy, water, and material resources efficiently. Sharks and stingrays are complex, intelligent beings and die in young, die young in tiny tanks. Breeding them is cruel. Taking them from the wild is cruel. Deprives them of natural life, migration, and reproduction. Why not create a non-life, high-tech menu with holograms, animatronic CGI live cams, and more? Vote no, and please rethink this outdated project. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gail Jansen.
Gail?
We can move on to the next speaker and then come back if she becomes available. The next speaker is Irene Wall.
Irene?
Hello, Councilmembers. This is Irene Wall. I'm opposed to the additional investment of city funds or bond capacity for the Ocean Pavilion on several grounds. This is not a sustainable project. It is also not a logical project for Puget Sound in terms of education or conservation. A giant shark tank will be a novelty for a few months and then will become a money loser and an energy hog. These website lists an impressive 51-member board of directors and 25 auxiliary board members. This is the body with the fiscal responsibility for the Ocean Pavilion, per the 2019 Funding Agreement. Perhaps this is the time to set the aquarium free. It is largely an entertainment business, and the city already has plenty of cost overruns and financial commitments for all of the other public aspects of the waterfront project. In prior plans, and in the 2018 MOU, the overlook walk was distinguished from the pavilion, which can be built without the pavilion roof. Please stop the bleeding.
Our next speaker is Tiffany McCoy.
Hi, this is Tiffany McCoy. I am the advocacy director for Real Change and calling in against the bonuses for SPD. Folks on this council say they want to follow the data, but it would be irresponsible for you all to grant these bonuses when pay has never been flagged as a barrier to SPD hiring or retention. You all commissioned an SPD Recruitment and Retention Work Group in 2019 to explore hiring and retention for SPD. The work group did not identify pay as a barrier to either hiring or retention. So you are commissioning these work groups. They're telling you that this isn't an issue, and yet we're still going to throw money at one department when we have teacher shortages, childcare worker shortages, and shortages of folks in library systems. The list goes on and on. Stop prioritizing one department over the rest of the department and put this money to better use.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Camille Gix.
Hi, my name is Camille Gix. I am with Real Change, a resident of District Three. I am calling today to oppose the legislation proposing hiring bonuses for cops. Beyond the fact, beyond the fact that more cops don't actually make us safer, the shortage of cops is also a narrative being perpetuated by local media that is simply not true. Both data and personal experiences of many can show that SPD is in fact overstressed with the decreases in staffing following the decrease in calls for service. Yesterday, outside our building, there were five cops, each with their own card, walking up the street and causing traffic, to arrest an individual for a nonviolent situation. It is deeply irresponsible to invest precious $30 on more cops that aren't needed when we have individuals living on the streets and massive portions of our city rent burden. The only way to truly invest in public safety is to use those funds to invest in community resources and housing. Vote no on the police recruitment and retention bill.
Our next speaker is Alex Spivey.
Hi, I'm Alex Spivey. I'm calling in from Capitol Hill, and I'd like to echo the comments of every other caller who has mentioned Resolution 120389 and echo them saying, please vote no. There is no data-backed reason to believe that hiring bonuses will increase retention of police officers, and more importantly, no data-backed reason to believe that there is any correlation to size of police department and reduction in crime. This is the equivalent of throwing our money down into a wishing well and crossing our fingers and hoping for the best. There's certainly better uses for this money. Thank you.
Our next speaker is TKT.
Whoa, everybody here? Can, can everybody hear me? Everybody hear me? I want to make sure everybody can hear this.
We can hear you.
Okay, my name's TK. I don't know if you guys know me. I'm just a regular, smegal person from Seattle, and about seven out of the eight, nine of you guys sitting up there looked me dead in my face two years ago and promised everything that these people was talking about. No more police, better options, public safety and all of that. And you straight up lied. Remember that? Oh, y'all don't remember that, huh? 2020 wasn't a fluke. I want you guys to understand that. Don't worry. Councilmember Nelson, I'll see you soon, soon enough, at least. 2020 wasn't a fluke, and in the day that Seattle could turn back up and get in the streets. Now, I don't advocate for tearing the city up or none of that. I don't want none of that. But we can get back in these streets and make some noise and make y'all stand up to what y'all promised. You got guys there talking about, they still asking for cannabis equity? Are you guys serious? After decades of imprisoning us for it? We still got to ask y'all for it? Why these white guys can make billions of dollars on this crew, right? We're not commodities. This ain't a transaction. These are human beings. Go add more cops, because more cops don't solve the problem clearly. Seattle's gun violence is at an all-time high. 15 years, it ain't been this high, but now it is. It's like the 90s again around here.
Our next speaker is Hannah Thompson Gardner.
Yes, thank you. And I would like to start with saying, please listen to the Black community leaders that have spoken before me. They have some very good things to say. I will not be speaking on those issues today, however. Hello, and thank you for providing us an opportunity to speak today. My name is Hannah Thompson Gardner, and I am the Director of Advocacy and Mission Advancement at the Northwest Animal Rights Network. I would like to speak on giving $20 million to the Seattle Aquarium. In 2019, NARN and others concerned over marine animal welfare vehemently protested and opposed the use of public funds for this project, and we will continue to do so in 2022 and beyond. To date, NARN supporters have written a total of 450 letters to you, urging you to change course and to reject this funding proposal. This figure does not count letters sent when promoted by other organizations. This figure is very high considering we were given only 72 hours' notice of this vote. Can this council truly justify to its voters that giving $20 million to an aquarium is the right choice? Please reject this funding proposal. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amy Webster.
Hi, hello. Good afternoon, Councilmembers. I'm calling in today to implore the City Councilmembers to vote no on the funding proposal for the shark tank at the aquarium. As a longtime Seattle resident, homeowner, taxpayer, and advocate for our oceans and the creatures that live within, I firmly stand against the city giving more money to fund these captive animals that will live in their lives in captivity, in smaller tanks. Even if this is a loan, I feel that this is a waste of the money that we could be, you know, funding a lot more important programs in the city. In addition to the ethical concerns, there are huge red flags around this project regarding its effect on climate and the water crisis. This project is not consistent with the city of Seattle's own stated policy of efficient use of limited energy, water, and material resources. It will use copious amounts of water, energy, and water, pumping in water from the Puget Sound, heating and filtering the water, and then cooling it and filtering the water and returning it back to the Puget.
Our next speaker is Jeanne Barrett.
Jeanne?
Yes, Jeanne. Thank you. Hello.
Hello.
Hello, City Councilmembers, and good afternoon. My name is Jeanne Barrett. I am joining others in urging you to vote against giving any more money to Seattle Aquarium, loaning any more money to Seattle Aquarium for a shark or stingray tank. In addition to the inherent cruelty of such a proposal, this tank would require energy and water that Seattle can ill afford during times of accelerated climate change, as well as contradicting stated city policy for efficient use of energy and water. The aquarium's budget management comes under serious question as well. During a time when our city needs funding in so many areas, perhaps the aquarium can live within its means and scale back on wild animal confinement. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chris Rogers.
Good afternoon. This is Chris Rogers. Please vote no on Council Bill 120396. The O&amp;M Agreement between Parks and the Aquarium Society obligates particular attention to exhibits and conservation education, focusing on Puget Sound. Instead, we get a fake ocean to house sharks and rays from the South Pacific? No matter how hard you try to green up this project, the environmental cost of construction and the day-to-day energy and water demands necessary to keep captive animals alive are significant. If this project had followed guidelines established by the Design Commission and the Parks Department with respect to community input, it would have been harder to ignore what we all know. Climate change is real. Climate change is real, our oceans are suffering and there is growing public dismay over keeping animals in captivity for entertainment. It would have been harder to hide the fact that this is a project geared to tourists, spearheaded by the business community, not by educators or conservationists. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Peter Condit.
Hello, this is Peter Condit in District Six. I'm calling in support of voting no on Council Bill one two zero three eight nine, which would let S P D pay out hiring bonuses of thirty thousand dollars per officer and would add four additional cop recruiters. City Council and the mayor's office have said that they want to improve public safety through unarmed response options. However, we have yet to see any movement from the executive to transfer any calls out of S P D. Even the previous administration was willing to move person down and wellness checks, which constitute about eight thousand calls annually, out of S P D through its proposed Triage One program. This administration, however, canceled Triage One. Refusing to reduce S P D's scope of work while simultaneously asking for bonuses is acting in bad faith and council should not allow it. Vote no on Council Bill one two zero three eight nine and invest instead in meeting people's basic needs and dispatching non-police personnel. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Celine Russo.
Is it Celine?
Hello. Hello, I'm Celine Russo. I'm a District One resident. I'm calling also to please reject hiring bonuses for S P D. Yes, it's true, we have fewer officers, but S P D's own data shows an equal decrease in nine-one-one calls. So we have the same ratio of police to calls we have always had in Seattle. If S P D says they don't have enough officers, it's because they are purposely misusing their funds. While we have a backlog of rape cases, we are also sending ten to twelve officers to each suite where they literally stand around chatting, drinking coffee and watching while the city violently pushes household people around the city. I have seen this. As other people have said, we, public safety is not increased, sorry, the number of police officers increasing does not have an effect on public safety. Please reject bonuses for S P D and stop giving them more money.
And our last speaker, Gail Jansen. And Gail, you want to do star six to unmute?
There you go.
Oh, hi, thanks for getting back to me. I'm also calling to urge you to vote no on giving the Seattle Aquarium more money for their shark tank. This will be housing tropical fish, sharks, coral and rays. Hello? Hello? Hello?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, council president. Put yourself on mute.
Can you hear me?
Council president, your mic's on. Go ahead, Gail. It looks like you're back on mute, Gail. You want to do star six?
All right, should I start again?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
I'm, okay, I'm voting, I'm urging you to vote no on the Seattle Aquarium for giving them more money. This will be a tank for warm water animals and that will require huge amounts of energy to filter and warm Puget Sound water. This exhibit will do nothing to keep these animals from being exploited and killed in the wild. Sharks are being decimated for the shark fin soup industry along with millions being killed in nets as bycatch. It's time to start thinking outside the tank. The aquarium could be set up at twenty-first century non-live attraction. And this kind of thing is in gaining traction around the world. An immersive theater that would let you be surrounded by these fish would be so cool. More and more taxpayers are getting tired of being forced to subsidize the animal incarceration industry. We're gawking at imprisoned animals that's only for profits and there's nothing, nothing to keep them from going extinct in the wild. Thank you.
Thank you, and that's the end of the speaker list, council president.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We've reached the, first of all, thank you all you who called in. And all the speakers have spoken from the remote and those that are in chambers. And with that, public comment is now closed. So let's move on in our agenda to adoption of the introduction and referral calendar. If there is no objection, the introduction and the referral calendar will be adopted. Not hearing or seeing an objection, it is indeed adopted. Moving on to adoption of the agenda, there's no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Not seeing or hearing any objection, the agenda is adopted. Okay, so moving on to G of our agenda, adoption of the consent calendar. We will now consider the proposed consent calendar, which I read into the record yesterday. Are there any items that any council member would like to have removed that we can address at the end of the agenda? Okay, not seeing anyone, not hearing or seeing anyone moving to remove an agenda item, I move to adopt the consent calendar. Is there a second? Thank you, Councilmember Herbold. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the consent calendar. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the consent calendar?
Councilmember Swant?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Musqueda?
Hi.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Hi.
And Council President Juarez?
Hi.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The consent calendar is adopted. Madam Clerk, will you please affix my signature to the minutes in the legislation in the consent calendar? Moving on to committee reports, we have six items on today's agenda. And our first item is will be Councilwoman Musqueda with a resolution. Madam Clerk, will you please read item number one into the record?
Agenda item one, Resolution three twenty sixty-five, condemning harassment, threats and political violence against elected officials and those seeking elected office.
Thank you. I move to adopt Resolution number three two zero six five. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilwoman Musqueda, as sponsor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, in order to put the most revised version in front of us, I'd like to move to amend Resolution three two zero six five by substituting version three for version two.
Thank you. It's, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to amend the resolution by substituting version three for version two. And Councilmember Musqueda, you are recognized to address the substitute.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Colleagues, I want to thank you for your participation in reviewing the resolution in front of us and your engagement in this conversation. I want to think, especially thank Pastor Carey for calling in this morning or this afternoon and offering us a glimpse in terms of the type of violence and threats that he received as well. This resolution in front of us today condemns harassment, threats and political violence against elected officials, election workers and those seeking elected office along with public servants. It's no secret that across this nation, we have seen increase in hate crimes, the rise of significant hate crimes specifically against the black community and Asian-American communities. The majority of these crimes being motivated by anti-black sentiment and increase over a hundred and fifty percent in anti-Asian American hate crimes. Some of the headlines from CNN read hate crime reports in U.S. surged to the highest level in twelve years, according to the FBI. The NPR headline says the rise in anti-Asian attacks during the COVID-nineteen pandemic has skyrocketed. Without a diverse array of individuals who both feel safe in their community but also feel safe in running for office and serving in elected office and also serving in our government, we really have a sham of a democracy. According to the National League of Cities report in twenty twenty-one, eighty-one percent of local elected officials of all races and all genders surveyed reporting having experienced harassment, threats and violence themselves. Simultaneously, there's been a record number of American women who are filing to be candidates in spite of this violence and threats. They are signing up to run for office. And as they sign up to run for elected office to seek growth in political power, they are being met with death threats, rape threats, sexist and racist abuse online and in person. Threats to life and sexual and sexual violent language discourage people, especially women, from running in office and for our colleagues, staying in office. Violent threats are escalating in community with hate crimes on the rise nationally since twenty fourteen, particularly against women, women of color, non-binary and non-gender conforming persons of color and communities of color. So the resolution in front of us includes language to condemn threats to our local elected officials, those seeking elected office and importantly, to our families, to the children of our colleagues and elected officials across the country who have also been on the receiving end of these threats. We have individuals in our community here in Seattle who have experienced type of threats and across the nation, we are sending a message in solidarity as well. No matter who is attacked, no matter their political leaning, no matter who it is who's sending the message, we send a message today with this resolution that racist sexist attacks or threatening one's family and children is unacceptable. I know that we've heard from Pastor Carey and again, I want to thank him for calling out his experience on July fourteenth and the fear that he experienced that day and the words that he left us with, I'll conclude when we vote. We also heard from Congresswoman Jayapal, who was threatened at her own house by a man with a deadly weapon. And he has now been charged with a felony felony for stalking and directly attacking her elected office position on July ninth. These attacks are specifically designed as a threat against those who are seeking to participate in representative democracy. And I want to thank you all for your consideration of this resolution in front of us in partnership with King County. Councilmember Jeremiah Zahalai introduced a similar resolution today that I believe the council is voting on as we speak. I want to thank his office and his legislative aide, Rosa Mai, from their staff for working with us and members of Local Progress as well. I'd like to conclude my opening comments by thanking councilmembers Peterson and councilmembers Herbold for their great input and additions to the resolutions in front of us, in addition to the council president and your office for working with us to advance this today. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on the substitute version three before we get to the actual text itself? Are there any other comments on substitute version three? Okay, so will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the substitute?
Councilmember Swant?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Musqueda?
Hi.
Councilmember Peterson?
Hi.
Councilmember Nelson?
Hi.
And Council President Juarez?
Hi.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The motion carries, the substitute is adopted and the amended resolution is before the council now. Are there any further comments on the amended resolution? Councilwoman Musqueda, I was gonna let you, I was gonna let you do closing, but I just wanted to see if your colleagues had anything to say before. I have it in here, I was gonna get right back to you. Is there any other comments from our colleagues? Okay, we're good. Councilmember Musqueda, take us home.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Thanks again to your office, Brindell, also Central Creek Chief of Staff in my office and Amelia Sanchez from the clerk's office for helping to shepherd this through. And I do have a closing comment here from Congresswoman Jayapal, who couldn't be with us today, but like Pastor Carey, wanted to echo comments in support of this resolution. She writes, thank you to the council, both King County and Seattle City Council for bringing this important resolution forward. Take, she'd like to take a minute to reach out and or to thank everyone who has reached out following the incident at her home. And all of that support has meant so much to her. She says, this resolution condemning harassments, threats and political violence against elected officials and those seeking office is critical at this moment. It was no accident that she, as an American progressive woman of color, has been on the front lines of fighting for justice and equity against white supremacy, was the target of this kind of racist xenophobic threat. She's also aware she's not the only elected official or candidate who has faced these kind of threats in Seattle or across the country. And unfortunately, there's a prominent public, there are prominent public figures who condone and even encourage extreme violence, whether through rhetoric or rallies, legislation like the Muslim ban or even an attempting to incite a coup on our nation's capital. This is bound to happen. Hate crimes have been on the rise and the new era of political violence threatens millions of Americans, not just members of Congress or elected officials. Violence often depends on first dehumanizing those being targeted, spreading fear and hate and undermining institutions to a point where there is a false sense that those, that the social order is collapsing. This kind of hate and extreme violence is difficult to roll back once unleashed. Truly beating back this hate and violence will require all of us coming together to condemn this behavior towards everyone, reset our norms and standards for what is acceptable behavior or speech and take away the tools that people use to conduct violent behavior. In conclusion, she notes, as Dr. Martin Luther King once said, morality cannot be legislated, but behavior can be regulated. Judicial decrees may not change the heart, but they can restrain the heartless. I am so proud that King County and the city of Seattle are denouncing these actions of political violence, she notes. Thank you again for your leadership. Thank you, Madam President.
All right. Okay, so will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution as amended?
Excuse me, Madam President, I forgot to note, Councilmember Herbold had asked to be a sponsor of this resolution, so I just want that noted before the final vote, if I may.
Do we know it, Councilwoman Herbold? Is there anything you want to add?
No, I just, I guess yes. I just want to highlight that I initially saw this really focused on people who are running for office. When we were at Local Progress, we heard stories of people who were actually campaigning for office and experiencing threats and, and, and of course, the threats and retaliation and intimidation that election workers have faced. And so I propose adding language sort of aligned with the narrative that this is about, about people who are running for office. And I say that because I want to, to recognize that members of this council have also experienced threats and intimidation. And I, I just want to apologize if we haven't done enough to speak out against, against that in the past. Thank you.
Okay, so we're ready to move forward. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution as amended?
Councilmember Swant?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Musqueda?
Hi.
Councilmember Peterson?
Hi.
Councilmember Nelson?
Hi.
And Council President Juarez?
Hi.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The resolution is adopted as amended and the chair will sign it. And Madam Clerk, will you please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Moving on to item number two, this is coming out of Councilwoman Morales's committee on behalf. Oh, Councilwoman Strauss is here. So Madam Clerk, will you read item two in the record and then Councilmember Strauss or Councilwoman Morales? You can let us know who's gonna tee this up.
Agenda item two, Council Bill one twenty-three five six, relating to flood planes, third extension of interim regulations established by ordinance one twenty-six one one three and amended by ordinance one twenty-six five thirty-six for an additional six months to allow individuals to rely on the updated national flood insurance rate maps to obtain flood insurance through the Federal Emergency Management Agency's flood insurance program.
Thank you. I move to pass Council Bill one two zero three five six. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to pass this bill. I will hand it over to either Councilwoman Morales or Councilmember Strauss.
Councilwoman Morales, I'm happy to speak to it, but if you're ready and able, please take it away.
Sure, that's fine. Colleagues, we discussed this briefly in briefing earlier, but in July twenty twenty, the council passed and the mayor signed an ordinance that would establish interim flood plain development regulations, including updated flood plain maps. The regulations have been extended twice and are due to expire in just a couple of days. FEMA produced the updated maps and established minimum required standards for the regulations and map areas include properties along Puget Sound, the Duwamish River and areas adjacent to creeks. The floodplain regulations contain building codes and other standards that make homes and businesses and people uh, safer from flooding and apply to permit applications for construction on property within the mapped floodplain areas. Uh, and so, um, if we don't extend these, uh, property owners in these areas may not be able to purchase flood insurance or even renew their existing policies. Um, the SEPA decision was appealed by the port in July two thousand and twenty-one, and so in the interim staff have been working on resolving issues with the port. And so the plan now is to complete the SEPA um, analysis and move forward with proposed um, permanent regulations within the Land Use Committee sometime next year. Um, but for now, the request is to um, extend again the interim regulations, and this did pass out of committee unanimously.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales. Are there any comments? Okay, um, Councilmember Morales, um, you can do closing remarks, or Councilmember Strauss, you may add on to that as well. Are there any closing remarks?
Councilmember Morales said it all.
Okay, thank you. That's what I call leadership and efficiency. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Sorry, Council President, I, if I missed this, but has it been moved at this point?
I moved it.
Yes. Okay, thank you, I apologize. Um, Councilmember Swant?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Musqueda?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
And Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The bill passes, the chair will sign it, and Madam Clerk, please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf. Okay, let's move on to item number three from the Economic Development Technology and City Light Committee, which is Councilmember Nelson. Madam Clerk, please read item number three to the record.
The Economic Development Technology and City Light Committee, agenda item three, resolution three-two-zero-sixty-one, relating to City Light Department acknowledging and approving the two thousand and twenty-two Integrated Resource Plan as conforming with the public policy objectives of the city of Seattle and the requirements of the state of Washington, and approving the Integrated Resource Plan for the biennium September two thousand and twenty-two through August two thousand and twenty-four. The committee recommends that council adopt the resolution.
Councilmember Nelson?
All right, well, Seattle City Light's two thousand and twenty-two Integrated Resource Plan, IRP, is a long-term strategy to meet anticipated customer energy needs over the next twenty years. And state law requires that Washington Utilities develop an IRP showing how the utility plans to meet customers' future electricity needs. And so this year's IRP is similar to past IRPs, but with the important new additions of increased attention to electrification and addressing climate change. It outlines steps City Light will take to maintain greenhouse gas neutrality, maintain equitable access to clean and affordable energy, and make progress toward be- being greenhouse gas-free by two thousand and forty-five. And it also outlines a ten-year pl- clean energy plan to meet the goals around reliability, affordability, and environmental responsiveness while meeting our regulatory requirements and ensuring service quality and equity. Uh, but the new portfolio of energy resources includes more wind and solar energy, and the plan paves the way for transportation and building electrification efforts to shift away from using fossil fuels. And it also commits City Light to further study um, uh, energy efficiency, distributed resources, storage, and customer solar potential under climate change and electrification loads. And so finally, the plan commits City Light to continue developing relevant social equity metrics and include them while making future analyses and decisions, and it incorporates additional climate change scenarios in future IRP analyses. So what I'm trying to get across is that uh, this IRP goes beyond what is required by state law, so I commend City Light for making extra effort in engaging in forward thinking to address the resource challenges we face in the upcoming decades.
Thank you. Are there any comments before I hand it back over to Councilwoman Nelson for closing remarks? Okay, I, Councilperson Swant?
Thank you, Council President Juarez. Apologies for not being able to have the camera on today. I will be voting no on this Seattle City Light Integrated Resource Plan or IRP because I'm concerned that it begins to open the door to the privatization of the utility. The IRP is a legally required document where City Light demonstrates that the city will have enough electricity in the coming years by calculating its expected resources and load. It has been required ever since the Enron disaster, when the rapacious private energy markets amassed immense profits by selling shares in future electricity that they didn't have, and driving up the cost of utility bills and leading to rolling blackouts. The whole thing, as we all know, was a major scandal. For many years, City Light's IRP has been very simple. The utility had a surplus of electricity that could sell, that it could sell wholesale to other utilities, and could therefore simply say that no new resources would be needed. This IRP is different because for the first time in many years, City Light has calculated that they will need to start looking for more resources in a couple of years. That raises the important question of where that electricity will come from. In committee, I asked City Light about their plans for new utility scale resources. Do they plan to have the city build and own our own new, you know, publicly owned new solar and wind generators, which, which I would very much support, or contract with other public utilities for the power, or contract with private for-profit power companies, which as I said in committee, would unacceptably open the door to privatization. For the last century, people in Seattle have benefited from inexpensive and climate-neutral electricity precisely because we are a public utility that owns and operates its own hydroelectric resources. And because it is a public utility, regular working-class people can organize to make demands when there are issues such as rates, the utility discount program, which, as I said in committee in my o- office, when it was chairing the Energy Committee, played a big role in um, majorly expanding enrollment into the utility discount program and the Skadi River Salmon. There is no guarantee of successful struggles, but with private utilities, there is really no space for democratic oversight at all. Parts of the country that have relied on private energy companies have seen extreme price gouging and fatal brownouts and blackouts, precisely because the private energy market is primarily interested in making profits and in fact obscene profits, not providing power. The example of Texas stands out. This is the first IRP in years that has discussed adding substantially new power generation, and I would be extremely concerned if the plan is to contract with private companies for that power because it would mean that City Light was incrementally becoming dependent on the rapacious private energy markets. Not all at once, but it would be a step toward privatization that I would not support. As City Light explained in committee, the IRP does not specify in writing where the new power will come from, and for that reason, I abstained in committee. However, City Light representatives also made clear that they expect to contract with the private market and really had not even entertained the possibility of expanding the public resources of our public utility. And for that reason, I will be voting no today. As I said in committee, I do not object to contracts with other publicly owned utilities such as the contract with Barnival, a public hydroelectric power plant that was built as part of the New Deal. And it is a good reminder that we need a real green New Deal. My objection is to contracts with private for-profit power companies. Elected officials in Seattle pay great lip service to the Green New Deal, but unfortunately for the political establishment, this is empty rhetoric. There was a time in the nineteen thirties when the threat of socialism was immediate, that the political establishment put real resources into public works, and the New Deal projects built powerful infrastructure like Barnival. To me, that is what a Green New Deal would really mean. It would mean taxing massive corporations in our city, like Amazon. In other words, at the very least, increasing the Amazon tax, working people's movements won in two thousand and twenty in order to build publicly owned wind and solar farms to meet our future energy needs and beyond, to push the private profiteering and polluting utilities out of the market like Puget Sound Energy. That is the IRP I would support, and I urge City Light to develop a Green New Deal plan for meeting Seattle's future electrical needs. However, this IRP I cannot support, and I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilperson Swant. Um, any other comments before I hand it back to Councilmember Nelson for closing remarks? Not seeing any. Councilmember Nelson?
Well, my response is that um, this is a, uh, the IRP is renewed every two years, and it is a long-range lookout, and it is um, an overstatement to say that uh, that there are plans being made right now to contract with private uh, solar and wind suppliers. Um, that was an acknowledgement that we have got to think about how we are going to meet um, many of the Green New Deal goals around moving from fossil fuels to uh, to more hydro, because we're in a really tough place here. We can't um, we can't just continue on business as usual. It's the responsible thing to uh, explore other sources of energy. And uh, as um, CEO Deborah Smith said, that they are not even in the stage of talking about contracts. I will just simply say that also, we are bound to protect our ratepayers. And uh, we cannot, um, I think that the infrastructure needs to, for solar and wind are, are far beyond our capacity uh, right now. So, so we're in a rock and a hard space. Do we, do we do business as usual? Do we just um, uh, or do we commit to um, massive infrastructure investments that will uh, that will be uh, very difficult, if not impossible, for our ratepayers to pay? So this is a long-term planning document, and um, I think that uh, the innovation here is that we're, that the utility is even acknowledging the fact that we will need to make changes in our portfolio to meet increased demand because of increased electrification, uh, climate change, which is decreasing uh, the um, our snowpack, et cetera. And so, that is how I would respond to um, to the comments that Councilmember Swant made.
Great. Thank you both for your comments. Okay, so let's move forward then. Will the clerk, I'm sorry, will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Councilmember Swant?
No.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Musqueda?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
And Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Eight in favor, one opposed.
Thank you. The resolution is adopted, and the chair will sign it. And Madam Clerk, please affix my signature to the legislation or the resolution on my behalf. All right, moving on to item number four out of the Finance and Housing Committee, and I see items four and five are Councilmember Musqueda. So let's start with number four. Madam Clerk, will you please read item number, the short title, item number four into the record?
According to the Finance and Housing Committee, agenda item four, Council Bill one-two-three-ninety-six, relating to the financing of the aquarium expansion project, creating a fund for depositing proceeds of tax-exempt limited tax general obligation bonds in two thousand and twenty-three. The committee recommends that council pass the bill.
Um, before I hand it off to you, Councilmember Musqueda, I just want to add that, um, for the viewing public, because I know that we know this, that there will be three amendments being proposed, amendment A, B, and C by Councilmember Herbold. But at this point, Councilor Musqueda is going to speak to and be recognized to provide the committee report on the um, on the bill.
Councilperson Musqueda? Thank you. I think uh, A, B, and C might be related to the next item, but I do believe Councilmember-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Amendment on this one as well, so.
Oh, it's just one. I apologize. There's one on this one, and there's three on the next one. Councilwoman Herbold, I saw you waving your hand, that's what you were trying to get my attention. So with that, thank you for correcting me, I was wrong. Councilwoman Musqueda?
Uh, thank you very much, Madam President, and um, I would like to share the introductory comments with my colleague and Councilmember Lewis as well, but Madam President, maybe I'll just speak now and speak to both of these items as I consider them a package, and then I'll hold my comments on the second one. Um, appreciate colleagues, your consideration of items number four and five on today's agenda. Uh, these um, pieces of legislation have been considered as well by the Debt Management Policy Advisory Committee, or DEMPAC. I, along uh, with uh, Central Staff Director, have the opportunity to sit on the DEMPAC Advisory Committee to consider any um, ordinance or item that may impact the city's debt management. Uh, we did have a good and robust conversation at DEMPAC, but there was a lot of emphasis on ensuring that this is a strong financial investment for the city. And uh, you, you previewed that there is going to be an amendment by our colleague, Councilmember Herbold, that I am supportive of as well. This builds on some of the language that I had asked to be included in the package so that we are preemptively saying that if there's any chance that the aquarium is not able to meet its obligation to the city, that the city has off-ramps or strategies to make sure that we're, we are recouping the revenue. And also, um, wanting to be very clear in, yes, we are supportive and supporting the um, aquarium, but in our obligation to the city and many projects, uh, this is uh, the, the last time we are able to offer such financial assistance. So, really appreciate the partnership uh, that the aquarium, Friends of the Waterfront, and the community at large have been um, showing to the building of the aquarium as it's going to be intimately tied into our refined waterfront that will be accessible by all, community partners, residents, and uh, those who are coming to visit us as well. Again, I'd like to share the opportunity with Councilmember Lewis, who has parks and um, uh, in his district, and he has uh, taken a real leadership role in making sure that this uh, project moves forward. So thank you very much for your consideration for this, and I'll be voting yes on both pieces of legislation, uh, and appreciate your support today.
Great. Councilmember Lewis?
Uh, thank you, Council President. I'm okay with holding my remarks until the consideration of Councilmember Herbold's amendment and putting the full amended bill before us. I, I think that was a good thorough committee report, so I, I don't have any other introductory remarks to add.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lewis. We will loop back to his chair of parks. All right. Uh, um, are there any other comments? And I know who's gonna raise their hand. Councilwoman Herbold?
Thank you so much. I move to amend Council Bill twelve-oh-three-nine-six as presented on Amendment A on the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second? I'm sorry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to amend the bill as presented on Amendment A. Councilwoman Herbold, you are again recognized to address this amendment.
Thank you. I'll make it short. As mentioned in council briefing yesterday, um, this amendment is intended to take a belt and suspender approach to ensuring that the negotiation terms in the bill are honored. The bill authorizes negotiation on the amendments to the agreement, but does not require the aquarium to agree to the negotiation terms sent out in the bill. So um, the intent is to ensure that the executive does not use the authority in the bill without uh, uh, a final execution of the amendments to the two agreements authorized by the bill. Um, I raised this concern out of abundance of caution, uh, in the case that the conditions should change in the future or that there are delays in finalizing the agreement, and not out of any concern that there is an attempt to not negotiate the terms laid out in the bill. The amendment was circulated uh, at ten-twenty on Monday morning by Central staffer Eric McConaughey, and is posted in legislature. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Herbold. Are there any other comments before I move forward on, on a vote? Okay, not seeing any. Will the clerk, clerk, please call, I don't know why I can't say clerk today. Will the clerk? Please call the roll on the adoption of Amendment A.
Councilmember Swant?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Musqueda?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Council President Juarez? Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The uh, motion carries, the Amendment A is adopted, and the amended bill before the council, now the amended bill is before the council. Are there any other comments on the amended before I hand it back over to the sponsors for closing remarks? Councilwoman Lewis?
Uh, thank you, Council President Juarez. Um, appreciate being able to consider this legislation today uh, in front of the full council. Um, I just want to do a little bit of level setting at the beginning, um, based on some emails we've received from community members in opposition to this legislation today, uh, about the implications for what we are considering, what it is, what it isn't, uh, what it can do, what it doesn't do. Just to fully, you know, make the public and colleagues aware before we cast this vote. Uh, this is not a proposal to give twenty million additional dollars beyond our initial commitment. It's a loan that's going to be repaid by the aquarium in partnership. So it is not, in a sense, a new policy decision that we are making. It is also not a policy decision that we're weighing in on, on whether or not there should be an Ocean Pavilion, as some members of the community weighing in have indicated that this vote is. The decision has been made by previous councils before uh, I was on this dais serving, and a number of us were, that the Ocean Pavilion would be a component of a revitalized waterfront project. The Ocean Pavilion is indeed, as- The Ocean Pavilion is indeed, as we discussed extensively in committee, integrated into the waterfront overwalk connecting Pike Place Market, giving Pike Place Market for the first time a second grand entryway uh, into that iconic Seattle location to a rejuvenated Seattle waterfront with a brand-new extensive waterfront Boulevard Park. This policy decision's been made. Uh, whether this, uh, loan policy, uh, passes or is defeated today does not change whether there'll be an Ocean Pavilion. It just determines if that Ocean Pavilion is going to take longer to build and how expensive it's going to be for us to build. And that's really what the question that's in front of us is. The question that's in front of us is can we be a creative partner with this important public asset on the Seattle waterfront that we own? The Seattle Aquarium. And can we be an important partner with the waterfront project, one of the most transformative legacy-setting projects that we have in front of us as a city, to make sure that this project is delivered on time and on budget? We are very well aware of the cash flow issues that have been induced by the COVID pandemic in the city. We're about to go into a fall budget session where we are going to be grappling still with the uncertainty and fluctuations in our general fund based on a resettling and reordering of the economy based on the impacts of COVID. This is our way of assisting the aquarium with this very relatable problem that we ourselves are facing. And how we can be creative in leveraging our resources to solve a temporary cash flow problem to make sure that we are not in a position where work will have to stop, be halted, be mothballed. And with those delays, as we well know, as people who oversee property or, um, uh, uh, property transactions and capital projects, we know that that comes with costs. We know that in capital projects, delay means money. This policy in front of us is a way that without raising additional taxes, without incurring a substantial amount of risk, uh, this is a way that we can help make sure that these projects are done on time. We also know that downtown Seattle's recovery is linked to a certain extent to the viability and success of our waterfront project and the placemaking that comes with it. We know that fifty-two percent of the tax revenue that we receive in our general fund comes from downtown Seattle. We want people to be able to go between the waterfront and downtown Seattle as a seamless experience that is made possible by the new overwalk that is integrated into the Ocean Pavilion. And that is really the policy that's in front of us today. It's making sure that as we come out of the pandemic, we are going to be in a position to make sure that our recovery is, um, uh, is going to be supported by these big capital investments and improvements that have long been in the making in the post-viduct waterfront space. So I'm going to be voting for this today. I really appreciate the work of Councilmember Muscata in putting this together, uh, for us to pass it before the recess. Um, I appreciate colleagues calling in and being flexible, who otherwise had, had planned vacations to be away um, and were able to accommodate coming to this meeting for this important, uh, commitment, not just for District Seven, but for the city as a whole. And with that, Madam President, I don't have anything else to add, um, and would just, uh, um, say I look forward to the vote.
Um, Al, thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Um, Councilmember Sawant?
Thank you, Council President Juarez. I will be voting no on items four and five related to increasing the aquarium renovation budget by twenty million dollars. Twenty million dollars is a lot of money and the aquarium is already somewhat expensive for working class families to visit. If this increased funding is paid for by ticket sales, I would be concerned about what that would mean for those ticket costs for ordinary people. And if it is not, I think that twenty million dollars would be better spent on maintaining our power parks throughout the city, including setting up clean public restrooms with unionized staffing, not to mention housing. In committee, presenters blamed the increased construction costs on everything from COVID to the concrete strike. If this bill had suggested paying for the twenty million by increasing taxes on the concrete bosses whose greed caused the concrete strike, not the workers and the district members who are fighting for their justifiable demands, it could have been different. But in this form, I will be voting no. Because this budget legislation requires two bills to effectively do one thing, these comments that I've just made are for both this item and the next item. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawant. Um, before we go to a vote, I have a few comments I want to make. I normally don't like to make a lot of comments as I'm chairing the meeting as council president. But, uh, first and foremost, I want to thank Councilmember Lewis for, um, clarifying some of the issues that, and some of the issues that were brought up in public comment in the letters and calls that we have received regarding the zoo. Um, I used to chair, as you know, the, um, public assets, which included the waterfront, Seattle Center, Parks, Zoo, and the aquarium. And this was something that I had worked on along with Councilmember Bagshaw for at least six years. So I'm comfortable with it being a loan, an inter, interfund loan, which governments do all the time, every day, uh, with interest to be paid back. And, um, I see it as, um, good stewardship, uh, particularly on behalf of the Chair of Parks, Councilmember Lewis, those on the committee. And those that took the time to understand this public asset, uh, for the waterfront. As you know, um, I represent District Five, and I think Seattle North will give downtown and the waterfront a run for their money about the next place where people come. But I'm really happy to support this. It's a long time coming, so I will be voting yes. So. All right. Okay, so we are done with our remarks. Is there anything else from Councilmember Muscata or Lewis as, um, kind of wrapping things up before we go to the vote? Councilmember Muscata, are you sure? All right, so with that, uh, let's, um, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the passage of the bill as amended?
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Sawant?
No.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Muscata?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
No.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
And Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Seven in favor, two opposed.
Thank you. The bill passes as amended. The chair will sign it, and Madam Clerk, please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf. All right, let's move on to item number five. This is also Councilmember Muscata. Madam Clerk, will you please read item five into the record?
Agenda item five, Council Bill One Twenty Three Ninety Seven, relating to the financing of the aquarium expansion project. Authorizing amendments to existing agreements with the Seattle Aquarium Society relating to such financing and providing further related matters. The committee recommends that council pass the bill.
Thank you. Councilmember Muscata?
Thanks, Madam President. I think my earlier comments, uh, and echoing as well what Councilmember Lewis noted, um, suffice for this item as well.
Great, thank you. Are there any comments? And not, oh, no, not seeing any. Okay, so with that in, Councilmember Muscata said what she had to say on this item. So then, um, we will go right to the vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Sawant?
No.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Muscata?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
No.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Seven in favor, two opposed.
Thank you. The bill passes. The chair will sign it, and Madam Clerk, please affix my signature. So we are now to item number six from the Public Safety and Human Services Committee, which I confused everybody. This is where we have the three amendments. Thank you for correcting me on that one. This will come out of Councilmember Herbold's committee. Madam Clerk, will you please read item six into the record?
Report of the Public Safety and Human Services Committee Agenda Item Six, Council Bill One Twenty Three Eighty Nine. Related to recruitment and retention of police officers in the Seattle Police Department, modifying a proviso in the two thousand and twenty-two budget by amending ordinance one two six five eight nine, creating positions in the Seattle Department of Human Resources to assist with their recruitment to the Seattle Police Department, modifying appropriations in the two thousand and twenty-two budget by amending ordinance one twenty-six four ninety, authorizing a hiring incentive program in the Seattle Police Department and ratifying and confir, confirming certain prior acts. The committee recommends that council pass the bill as amended.
Thank you. Councilmember Herbold?
Thank you. Um, just some opening remarks on the legislation generally. I, I want to be really clear because there's been some confusion. This legislation does not authorize one point seven million dollar in new spending because the council already has authorized one point one five million in May. Both in May and today, this is funding that is already in SPD's budget. Instead, the bill authorizes one hundred and eighty-nine thousand in hiring incentives during two thousand and twenty-two from existing funds in SPD's two thousand and twenty-two budget. The second half of the bonus would be paid only after probationary, the probationary period established by the Public Safety Civil Service Rules, which is one year, and officers who leave the department within five years would need to return the bonus. Secondly, the bill transfers two hundred and, I'm sorry, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in funds out of SPD to the Seattle Department of Human Resources for four positions to enhance recruiting and the ability to administer tests, which can speed up the hiring process. This is in addition to funds that the council previously approved for SPD, um, to hire folks outside of the department to accelerate background checks. Finally, the bill funds some items specifically called out in the prior SPD Recruitment and Retention Program and allows for funding for moving expenses per the council's earlier legislation in May. The bill was voted out of committee last week with a vote of four to one. Councilmember Nelson was added as a sponsor at the committee meeting. In the two thousand and twenty-two budget, council adopted funding for the Seattle Police Department's hiring plan to hire a hundred and twenty-five officers. Hiring has been slower than SPD projected, so the bill uses existing funds already in SPD's budget in support of the hiring pa, plan that the council already voted for and was already funded in the two thousand and twenty-two budget. A policy basis, the bonuses, um, was really important to me before moving forward on this. So I had staff compare figures from other cities, um, as noted in the Central Staff Memo. Seattle offers the second highest starting salary of larger departments in the state. But when one combines the starting salaries plus the bonuses, Seattle is near the top, though slightly below Kent and Everett. For lateral officers, um, using the up salary step and the proposed bonus, Seattle would be the second highest with a few other cities relatively close to, um, what, what Seattle was offering. Um, some have identified the fact that there was a study on a four-month program that started in two thousand and twenty-one and ended in February this year as proof that bonuses don't work. I, um, am trying to keep an open mind about the efficacy of, uh, bonuses. I remain skeptical, but I can't ignore the results of the partial study from the one-year two thousand and nineteen program. Those that one in five applicants cited the bonus is one reason they sought work for the police department. Twenty percent more applicants matters when for every, every three hundred and fifty candidates who completes both components of the entry police officer exam, SPD only hires about thirty of that, those three hundred successful applicants. Um, by the Public Safety Civil Service Commission's best estimate, at for every one thousand four hundred and forty applicants, Seattle may be able to hire thirty police officers. Said differently, that for every twelve applicants in two thousand and twenty-one, we hired one officer. Those who, um, have said that we're prioritizing SPD over other departments, council has newly authorized that the city pay relocation expenses of people moving to work in Seattle for all positions in all departments as an incentive bonus. The Seattle Human Resources Department is now using this tool to promote equity in hiring today because of the work that came before this and because of the council's vote in May. As I noted at the August ninth S H S committee meeting with the ongoing analysis of Council Central Staff, our timetable, uh, could result in some potential amendments. So, uh, thank you, uh, for, um, allowing time for these three amendments, Madam Chair. Uh, Council Central Staff and my office have been in regular contact with Mayor's Office, Public Safety Civil Service Commission, the Seattle Department of Human Resources, and Labor Relations. Um, in line with this ongoing work, there are three amendments listed on the agenda, Amendments A, B, and C. Mayor's Office has no objection to these three amendments, and I want to thank the Mayor's Office for their collaborative ongoing engagement in this work. Madam President, would you like me to speak to the amendments now, um, or would you like, uh, comments first?
Let's hold up. Um, I would like to see if there are any comments regarding your committee report before we go to your proposed amendments A, B, and C. So are there any comments to Councilmembers, Councilmember Herbold's committee report that she just shared with us before we, uh, move on to the amendments? Okay, I do not see any. So with that, Councilmember Herbold, I believe you have something for us.
Thank you so much. Uh, I move to amend Council Bill Twelve Oh Three Eighty Nine as presented on Amendment A on the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to amend the bill as presented on Amendment A. Councilmember Herbold, you may now address Amendment A.
Thank you. This amendment would add an evaluation requirement that mirrors the evaluation requirement um, on ordinance twelve fifty-seven eighty-four. That's the legislation that authorized a one-year Seattle Police Department Hiring Incentive Program that began in June two thousand and nineteen and sunsetted in June of two thousand and twenty. Um, you may recall that, um, that evaluation was not, not fully completed. Um, so it, it replicates, um, what we had intended at that time. Um, the amendment would also add a sunset date of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four to the SPD Hiring Incentive Program consistent with the executives' plan, run the program through two thousand and twenty-four. Um, these were, um, two issues that were, um, identified, um, as potential issues to address in, uh, Council Central Staff's memo.
Thank you. Are there any, uh, comments in regards to the Amendment A? And, uh, let me say one thing before handing it up to you, Councilmember Muscata. Um, and I do want to thank you, Councilmember Herbold, you and your office, um, for providing all of us, um, yesterday um, with, with Greg Dawson and Anne and everybody, um, the, uh, memo that you sent to us explaining Amendment A, B, and C. So I appreciate that. Councilmember Muscata?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I will save some of my comments on the underlying legislation until after the amendments are considered. Um, I will just note that I'm going to be supporting this amendment in front of us. Um, obviously, I, I expressed concerns about the underlying legislation in Public Safety Committee last week. Um, but this amendment, if, um, it is adding a sunset and adding and imposing evaluation requirements, those are two things that I think, um, help scope this. Um, so while I don't necessarily agree with the underlying legislation, I will support this amendment because I think it helps to add an end date and evaluation criteria.
Thank you. Are there any other comments before we go to a vote? Not seeing any. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the adoption of amended A, Amendment A?
Councilmember Sawant?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Muscata?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson? And Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed?
Thank you. The motion carries and Amendment A is adopted. And, um, are there any further comments on the amended bill before we move on to the second part of this amendment process? Okay, not seeing any. Councilmember Herbold?
Thank you. I move to amend Council Bill Twelve Oh Three Eighty Nine as presented on Amendment B on the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second?
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to amend the bill as presented on Amendment B. Councilmember Herbold?
Thank you so much. This amendment would provide clarity about the groups of police officer candidates that are eligible for hiring incentives consistent with Public Safety and Civil Service Commission's definition of candidates that are considered rehires. Um, and thus, when you're a rehire, you're eligible under the SPAG agreement for benefits reinstatement package that has economic value to these candidates. Under the Public Safety Civil Service Commission rules, officers may request and receive reinstatement subject to approval by the Public Safety Civil Service Commission. Chief of Police reinstated officers receive reinstatement benefits, including returning the previous classification, salary step, and accrual rates for vacation and sick leave, um, as, um, as was in place when they left. Um, and, um, in addition, the, um, uh, uh, the, the SPAG Guild contract, um, allows this reinstatement package for- um allows this reinstatement package for all officers that return uh within two day, two years. So in addition, the reinstated officers do not have to retest and can begin work and get to pay, get paid faster. Um, again, these reinstatement benefits have economic value as hiring incentives, so the amendment itself clarifies that the, the officers that are rehired, that are getting this package, again, rehired within, within two years, um are not eligible for the bonuses. Folks who are rehired after two years and thus not entitled to um reinstatement package um are not considered by the P S C S C as rehires and thus are not eligible for the reinstatement package and thus would be eligible for the bonus.
Thank you. Are there any comments on Amendment B before we go to a vote? Councilmember Muscata?
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, similarly, I'll be support, supporting this amendment today. I think it further scopes who qualifies for the incentives um and explicitly does not apply this to officers coming back within a two-year period. So I appreciate the um uh adaption, adaptation here and um enhancement to the legislation. I'll be voting yes on the amendment.
Thank you. Okay, not seeing any other hands. Um, will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of Amendment B?
No.
Councilmember Sawant?
No, sorry.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Muscata?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
And Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Eight in favor, one opposed.
Thank you. The motion carries and Amendment B is adopted. Is there any other further comments bef, on the amended before we move forward? Not seeing any. Um, Councilmember Herbold, um, the floor is yours again.
Thank you. I move to amend Council Bill twelve oh three eight nine as presented on Amendment C of the agenda.
Is there a second? I will second it. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to amend the bill as presented on Amendment C. Councilmember Herbold, we're back to you again.
Thank you. This amendment would acknowledge that some of the provisions of Council Bill twelve oh three eight nine may require collective bargaining before implementation. The amendment also clarifies that the department's existing use of four-ten schedules, that's uh four days a week at um ten hours a day. This is a, this is a desired schedule of police officers. Um, but that the department's existing use is actually um the result of an agreement between the city and the unions for limited implementation within um the Community Response Group, the officers that volunteer for um for that assignment. Um, and that further implementation of four-ten schedules uh may require bargaining, but not the ten thousand dollars related to the four-ten schedules in this bill and the other um, the other uh uh it existing funding for the incentives um is no, are not things that need to be, that need to be bargained. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any comments before we go to a vote on Amendment C? Okay, not seeing any. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the adoption of Amendment C?
Councilmember Sawant?
No.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold? Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
No.
Councilmember Muscata?
No.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
And Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Six in favor, three opposed.
Thank you. Um, so um, the motion carries Amendment C is adopted. And um, are there any further comments on the amended bill at this point? And then um, I'm gonna let, if there isn't any, uh before I let Councilmember Herbold or others, okay, go ahead, Councilmember Muscata.
Sorry, Madam President. Um, I believe you said my name?
I did. I called you first.
Okay.
And then Councilmember Morales, then Councilmember Sawant.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, thanks again for the opportunity to echo where I think there's a lot of common ground with the Chair of Public Safety and my colleagues. Uh, last week in the Public Safety Committee, we talked about how there was a joint concern, a joint concern being echoed by this council that the previous administration has not yet followed up with the implementation of alternatives to public safety as funded by the council and as signed into law by the budget last year. I think that there's some optimism that there's um a greater sense of collaboration on how we could move forward with some of those alternatives, but we still are in a position where many of those strategies that are funded via the city, not the funding strategies that the council directly funded to community partners, that funding has gone out the door. But the strategies within our own city um still have yet to be realized, and I think that there's shared interest in making sure that those alternatives to public safety get the attention and expedited implementation that they deserve, so we can move forward with these commitments that were signed into law and prioritized in the last few years. That is where I think we have common ground, and I look forward to working with my colleagues and the Chair of Public Safety in continuing to push forward on those efforts. As I also noted in committee in the Public Safety Committee last week, I think that this is uh legislation that is not necessarily strategic when we are in the middle of bargaining, and that is why I voted uh no on that last amendment and didn't have the chance to explain why, but I do believe that this kind of conversation should be done at the bargaining table. I also um noted in my comments last week that it does not align with what I have heard directly from human service providers who are in direct communication with officers who on a daily basis are encountering, encountering folks who are responding to person down calls, who are responding to people who have substance abuse or mental health uh related needs, housing-related needs. And in conversations that officers have had directly with human service providers, they have said, and I quote from their report back, that there is no amount of funding that can compensate for officers not having a place to refer folks who are in the midst of crisis. That is where I think we should be focusing our efforts. That is what will help at retention and recruitment strategies to make sure that officers um are not in a place where they are bringing people to Harborview as a revolving door or seeing the same individuals on a repeat um uh on a, on a list of names that they know because these are the same people who have no place to go. Officers right now are being called to respond to those um to those calls, and we are doing everything we can to make it so that a badge and a gun person is not who is showing up for those calls. But until then, uh what I think we should be doing is focusing on making sure that there is a landing zone, making sure that folks who have mental health or substance abuse, housing needs, have a place where they can be referred, and there is not constant calls to nine-one-one to um show up for these individuals who truly need human services and not a badge and a gun. So when human service personnel tell me that officers themselves are saying that additional compensation isn't going to help them with finding a landing zone for people in high needs and high stress, that is what I'm interested in responding to. As I mentioned last week, a PR firm won't help officers have a landing zone for these people. Hiring incentives won't necessarily help the force uh be able to make referrals that are necessary, necess, necessary. A marketing strategy that we're paying for won't help that. And a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a consultant to find a new chief or to help with the chief search is not going to help with those issues that are being identified from officers and human service personnel who see folks on a daily basis who need additional housing, shelter, mental health, and substance abuse needs, especially for those with high needs and acute care services that we are not meeting in our city or region. I uh look forward to, again, working uh with the, this administration, the mayor's administration, and our council colleagues who have a shared interest in actually implementing those alternatives to public safety. But we um need to both do that and pay attention to what our own city research has said. And again, I will cite the quote Recruitment and Retention Workgroup Final Report, which a link you will be able to find online from our own city department, a work group which included the Seattle Police Department. This report did not identify incentive pay as a barrier to either doing hiring or retention for the Seattle Police Department. The final report did not identify hiring incentive as a recommendation. And our own city analysis of the hiring incentives used late last year showed that, and I quote, "SPD communicated the department did not experience an increase in hiring since implementing a hiring incentive in October two thousand and twenty-one." As also mentioned in the central staff memo, the research director of the Police Executive Research Foundation and the executive director for the International Association of Police Chiefs looked at whether or not there was any significant evaluations or research on the effectiveness of hiring cash incentive po, um policing. And they said, and I quote, "There is not yet a body of research to support this practice." So across the nation and within our own city, there is repeated questions, concerns about this as a strategy to address hiring, let alone re, re, retention. And retention, I bring up lastly to note uh a number of concerns with the strategy. Um, our city human services department summarized that offering a hiring incentive is a short-term strategy meant to induce the prospects of an individual accepting a job. However, the money is a one-time fix that may not compensate for uncompetitive wages, difficult or unresponsive working conditions, lack of opportunity to develop relevant experience, skills, and limited promotion opportunities, and signing bonuses, for example, for newly hired external talent can negatively impact employee morale. Employees promoted internally or already working on the job can feel undervalued and unappreciated when their financial package is not what is now being offered to new recruits. This is, this is what has been said is a potential uh motivator for the le, legislation that was transmitted by the mayor. And again, our own city data said that hiring incentives are a potential for breaking trust with existing personnel and makes it harder to retain trust and improve morale within our own ranks when we offer programs like this. So because um this is not supported by our own city data, national data, and I think that we have uh more opportunities to focus on what officers are saying they need, which is landing zones for folks. I'm going to be voting against this legislation again today and look forward to continuing to work to implement the alternatives to policing that this council has supported, and I thank you for the time to explain that.
Thank you. Councilmember Morales?
Oh, I don't have to unmute because I am here in chamber. Uh, thank you very much, Council President. Um, I first do want to say that I agree with uh Councilmember Muscata. I, I don't sit on the LRPC anymore, uh but I agree that it's not strategic to be offering incentives when we are in the midst of bargaining. Um, that said, uh, I want to say what I've been saying for two and a half years, which is that when we have scarce public resources, we should be allocating them in a way that truly addresses our public challenges. Uh, and we know that we have a lot of challenges in the city, and they are things that won't be solved by the police, our homelessness crisis, our uh need for more affordable housing, our limited access to behavioral health care. Our neighbors are struggling to make ends meet, and we know that many of them are experiencing violence and that there are community interventions that are treating the symptoms of violence, including the police, our peacekeepers, regional peacekeepers, our violent interruption programs. These are important, but they do nothing to transform the neighborhood conditions that create violence in the first place. What we really need if we want to address public safety is to focus our energy on building healthy communities, especially for our most vulnerable Seattleites, and especially for our young people. We need to put resources into changing the community conditions that lead to violence in the first place. That means high-quality affordable housing, good-paying jobs, um access to capital to support entrepreneurship, youth mentorship, school nurses, after-school programs, affordable mental health, and other health care. The SPD budget constitutes uh almost twenty-three percent of our, you know, one and a half billion-dollar general fund. That is, uh, well, there are forty-two other city departments that rely on what's left to fund their operating expenses and to provide city services. SPD's budget is three and a half times bigger than DEAL. It's four times bigger than the Office of Housing. It's thirty-six times bigger than the Office of Economic Development. And the overtime budget alone is substantially larger than other city departments. And it has become a backdoor for growing SPD's budget with very little oversight into how that money is spent. And we all know that this is a problem because we, as a council, have been dealing with this for several years. Until we acknowledge the disparity and the impact of these policy choices on the very people we claim we want to keep safe, until we reallocate our finite public resources in a way that can change the conditions that lead to public safety problems, we will continue to spin our wheels on safety. I cannot in good conscience support continuing to deny other city departments the resources they need to provide critical services to Seattleites who need more than a badge and a gun to improve their communities. For that reason today, colleagues, I will be voting no.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales. Councilmember Sawant?
Thank you. I will be voting no on increased hiring bonuses for police. I have explained my position on this many times in the past, and my office has had a consistent position. Increased policing does not statistically result in safer neighborhoods. The data shows that public safety is deeply affected by economic and social inequity, not police staffing, and these funds should be put toward reducing inequality. In reality, inequality has spiraled further and further out of control, and crime rates are reflecting that. As I said when I voted no on police hiring bonuses in May this year, rather than cap bonuses, these funds, along with an increase in big business taxes, should be put toward improving resources like public schools and childcare, publicly affordable housing, tiny houses to immediately shelter those without homes, and public parks and publicly accessible restrooms. All of this should go hand in hand with expanding the number of unionized living wage inflation-adjusted jobs. Yes, it is not a lot of money in the two thousand and twenty-two budget, which is almost over, but the democratic establishment is committing to a program of hiring bonuses, which they will certainly uh try to add funds for in the two thousand and twenty-three budget. Further, hiring bonuses are not the primary issue affecting police staffing levels or recruitment and retention. If there is any moral question, it is entirely because of the way the police department has been used by the establishment. During the BLM movement, the political establishment unleashed the police like an occupying army into our neighborhoods, filling the streets with tear gas and flashbang grenades, and as a result, earned the real outrage from community members. Hiring bonuses will not overcome that justifiable outrage. Councilmembers have said again and again that they wish there could be accountability, but they say that that, that is an issue that needs to be negotiated in the contract, but this is simply not honest. It is worth noting that councilmembers who use quote-unquote bargaining as an issue, excuse for the lack of accountability in the police department have no interest in actually bargaining to establish any real accountability when they do have the opportunity. What is needed is real police accountability with democratically elected community oversight boards with the real powers to hold the police accountable, including hiring, firing, and subpoena powers. Above all, this whole issue is a reminder really of how the police under the capitalist system are fundamentally organs of state repression against working-class people in oppressed communities. Outrageously, the city's democratic establishment is offering more and more money to police officers at the same time that the Seattle Police Officers Guild or SPAG has not yet agreed to a contract with even the most insignificant accountability measures. Let's not forget that SPAG was expelled by the delegates of the King County Labor Council, our region's labor movement. The majority of the rank-and-file union members in the Seattle area understand that an injury to one is an injury to all, that the police force that is used by the ruling class to actively oppress our homeless and low-income neighbors and communities of color and to repress protest movements has no place in the labor movement. I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawant. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I will be voting for Councilmember Herbold's legislation this afternoon, and thank Councilmember Herbold for bringing this forward. Uh, we know that we are nationally in a very competitive marketplace for attracting and recruiting members of the police service in our community and other communities. Uh, going forward, we know that a critical component of our comprehensive public safety system is going to have to be policing. There is no constitutional society that I'm aware of that doesn't have some kind of um law enforcement with a monopoly of force to enforce a social contract. It's important to have a police force. We know that in order to attract and retain those officers, we need to follow the lead of other cities to be able to compete for the same pool of potential recruits. And just a quick perusal will show that um if we look at some national cities that might not necessarily be peers like Albuquerque, New Mexico, five thousand dollar for new recruit signing bonuses, fifteen thousand dollars for laterals, Springfield, Oregon, next to Eugene, Oregon, ten thousand dollar signing bonuses. And if we're gonna start being in the habit of learning from other cities that are assigning, signing bonuses as an incentive, we should extend our practice to learn from other cities on the other public safety innovations that they have been adopting. that they have been adopting over the course of the last two years. And I specifically chose Albuquerque and Springfield because both of them have robust and well-developed alternative response programs to respond to a large percentage of 911 calls that we know the police do not need to respond to. The growing national movement in low-acuity first response is something that in 10 years is going to be adapted universally across the country. People are going to look back on how public safety worked in the pre-2020 era and not going to be able to believe the types of calls that armed gun-and-badge police officers used to be dispatched to. And I wish I could sit here on the dais today uh, voting for this important legislation, which is important because there are jobs only police can do, and we have experienced significant attrition of police officers leaving without standing up significant alternative services to take on some of those responsibilities. I wish I could be on this dais, voting for that package, and saying that we are well on our way to being a national leader in providing those alternative responses. But we frankly are not. Uh, as Councilmember Mosqueta indicated, this council has repeatedly funded various different initiatives for response alternatives, and we have not been able to move forward over the course of the last two years. I'm very encouraged by our discussions with the Harrell administration and by the statements that, uh, Mayor Harrell has made about our partnership to expand alternatives in the coming months uh, with a renewed focus and effort that is a joint council and mayoral um, goal. And I think that that is going to go a long way toward driving the kind of conversation we need to have on comprehensive public safety. This measure today is important, and it's critical to reverse our attritional losses in the police department, but in and of itself, it's not going to be sufficient for the kind of result that a lot of community members have indicated a rejuvenated police staffing plan is going to lead to. That can really only come through a continued diversification of the available responders to a continued emphasis on public health and welfare improvements. I do just want to leave, um, as a, uh, transition, um, at the end of my remarks to the budget conversations that'll begin in earnest when we come back from recess, that the Denver Star Program, which the council in the city of Denver recently appropriated $1.4 million contract to support, $1.4 million in Denver is going to support six vans and 12 workers for those vans to provide low-acuity, public-health-based, uh, non-police-involved first response. And I only cite that to indicate that it's within our power to do this. Other cities are doing it. It's not prohibitively expensive. It's not unduly complicated. And I think that we really need to center that conversation as part of our budget deliberation and continue to put resources behind this as this council has done over the course of the last two years and have a renewed focus on a new partnership with the new mayor where this will be a bigger priority and make sure that this does not cease being a council priority for executive implementation. So, uh, with that, Madam President, I will be supporting this legislation today and look forward to future conversations to make sure we have comprehensive public safety policy in the city of Seattle.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Are there anyone, is there anyone else before I make a comment before we move back to Councilwoman Nelson?
That's what I was gonna say.
Well, I wanted, I, I'd like to let you guys speak first before I say something, then hand it back over to Councilmember Herbold to do closing remarks.
Got it. Well, these will be my only remarks, I believe. Um, so on February 15th, Reverend Harriet Walden sent Mayor Harrell and City Council a letter saying Mothers for Police Accountability supports more SPD hiring to reduce violent crime and enhance justice. And ended by saying Seattle citizens deserve a safe city. And so in response, I put forward Resolution 32050 calling for the development of an SPD staffing incentives program to accelerate the hiring of new officers. This bill is the outcome I was aiming for, which is why I signed on as co-sponsor. And I thank Mayor Harrell and his team for the work that went into this package and Public Safety Chair Herbold for, um, for being prime sponsor. Thank you very much. So I'm not going to repeat the, the grim shots fired statistics that I usually do. Uh, I acknowledge that we need a, uh, better way to respond to people in crisis. Um, and we don't yet have that model set up. And, uh, I also have to acknowledge that we are talking about more than people in crisis. We're talking about systemic, um, in, in, in serious crime. And I don't believe that we can wait until the conclusion of contract negotiations to start saving lives. Uh, so this bill will help us compete with other jurisdictions for the officers and investigators we need to reduce the number of people shot and killed on our streets. But it'll take years to build back up SPD's staffing levels. And obviously, it's, it's, it's not the bonuses, it's not the money that will, that will get us there necessarily. Um, what's more important, I think, is culture change. And, uh, this bill is a recognition that we value the crucial role our officers play in creating a safer city. And the retention components are an acknowledgement that we need to foster a more welcoming and supportive workplace. So let's be clear, this is a means, not an end. And so for now, passing this bill shows that when the mayor and city council listen to community and work together, we can start to solve problems. And that's what a functioning city government looks like, and that's what our constituents and new recruits want to see. So I'll be supporting this bill.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Is there any other words for my colleagues before I make some closing comments? And then we hand it back over to Councilmember Herbold to do her closing comments as well. Okay, I do not see any. So, um, uh, I will be supporting this and voting yes today. And, uh, I actually agree with everything all of my colleagues have said, even when, where they, um, are, um, opposite ends of the spectrum in agreement or disagreement, because I believe your words, I believe your truth, and I've seen all of you in the last two years do a lot of hard work. I particularly want to thank Councilmember Herbold for taking on this very difficult, emotional, and complex subject. Uh, we both serve on the nationwide search for a new chief of police, so her and I are in an interesting position as well on, as well as in the LRPC, our labor group. So the public doesn't see the hard work behind the scenes in dealing with the policy, the legality, working with the union, the executive, but more importantly, working with our communities. So as I've shared, we've, we've have learned a lot these past two years, things that we probably already knew, but really came to fruition these last two years. Um, and I think we can all say and agree that good policy and common sense and an understanding of who we are as a city, our humanity, makes change, not slogans. Um, and I think that's where we're headed. Is this perfect? No. It's a step in the right direction. And with that, I was going to share this anyway, but I was actually going to share it for another event, um, coming up. But I wanted to share the words of Dr. Autumn Blackdeer. And I wanted to share this because I think it's important, because I think this issue, we, we could talk all day about, you know, policy, about data, a lot of things that we hear. But, um, you know, at the end of the day, it is about how we feel about public safety, community policing, and alternative means to policing. Um, and as Dr. Autumn Blackdeer has shared, you know, relatives, may you move from standing in your truth to walking in your purpose. And today, we are moving forward and walking in our purpose, hopefully, I believe, to a safe, healthy, and sensible policy that brings us, as Councilmember, um, Nelson said, a safe city. So I want to say this in the context of the hard work that we've all done, but it's time to start healing. It's time to start having, um, conversations where we listen to each other and not holler over each other, that we respect each other's opinion, that we get away from if you're not with me or against me, because that isn't how we're going to get to safe community policing and protecting all of our community members. So with that, um, I will be voting yes on this, and, um, I will leave it at that. Okay, with that, um, I am going to hand it to Councilmember Herbold to do closing remarks, and then we'll move to a vote.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, let me just start my closing remarks here. Uh, appreciate the grace. Um, again, this legislation uses existing funds in the Seattle Police Department budget toward the goal that council supported to hire 125 officers in 2022. Um, this was approved in the budget. SPD's revised hiring projection is 84 officers for the year. So, um, significantly fewer officers are possible to be hired than the, than the number of hires that the council already authorized. I've repeatedly said that development of alternatives, police response to 911 calls is a critical component of both our recruitment and retention and public safety strategies to make sure officers' workloads are sustainable. Seattle is not unique. Cities across the country are facing police officer shortages. A critical part of the long-term solution is to lessen the load on officers and create new, more effective ways of responding to calls that do not require an armed police response. We can't keep asking police officers direct traffic, help people in mental health crises when we don't have enough officers to investigate sexual assaults or respond to 911 calls. Being a first responder is a very difficult job. We should not make it more, we should not make it an impossible job. Us Police Chief Brown noted in 2016, "Every societal failure we put on the cops to solve, not enough mental health funding, let the cop handle it. Not enough drug addiction funding, let's give it to the cops," he said. "Schools fail, give it to the cops. That's too much to ask." Policing was never meant to solve all of those problems, he said in 2016. Dallas Police Chief. Let me say it again for emphasis. Being a first responder is a difficult job, and we should not make it an impossible job. Councilmember Mosqueta has noted that human service providers tell her that officers tell them that not developing alternatives to actually help people is harming to officer morale. It's also important, especially with fewer officers, to right-size what we ask of officers because there are tasks that only foreign officers can do, as Councilmember Lewis mentioned today. My support for this bill, ending recruitment and incentives proposed by the mayor and SPD has been dependent on the executive's recognition of this additional important component, the recruitment and training objectives, their commitment to develop a new 911 alternative response program. Last week, uh, week before last, I should say, uh, a staff group between the mayor's office and council central staff finally started this joint work, including Seattle Police Department, the Community Safety and Communications Center, and the Fire Department. Additionally, the city's quarterly consent decree filing last month memorialized these shared goals, noting in this consent decree filed with the judge that, quote, "The work group will recommend approaches that increase SPD for alternate response priority three and four calls in the near term through an alternate response pilot and evaluation of existing resources that could be deployed or more efficiently deployed on projects like special events." And it goes on further to note that the mayor's office will propose preliminary recommendations on the subset of calls that maybe good candidates should divert from police or co-response, and estimates this process will be completed in the fall. I appreciate the mayor and SPD bringing this bill forward, and I also want to recognize, uh, interim Chief Diaz's new Before the Badge program suggested by this council, um, when the previous mayor did not include funding for this program. This program connects officers with community in advance of state training. Um, and I want to quote from, from the website for the program, "Three parts. Meet with community groups to have discussions as individuals about policing in Seattle. Work with the wellness unit to obtain tools to help with the stresses of the job. Three, learn about SPD precincts, officers, opportunities, and leadership." And I quote that the website reads, "In addition, beyond, Before the Badge includes exploration of the policing professions, racist history, gender responsiveness, and the science of relationship-based policing." Um, want to also flag as, as part of this larger body of work, um, the Seattle Public Safety Civil Service Commission has approved preference points for language skills in the past and is committed to working on preference points for community service this year. This is another, um, way of ensuring that the folks that we are hiring for these jobs are the people that are best suited for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbold. All right, with that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the passage of the bill as amended?
Councilmember Sawant?
No.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
No.
Councilmember Mosqueta?
No.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson? Council President Hodas?
Yes.
Six in favor, three opposed.
Thank you. The bill passes as... Oh, I'm sorry. Ooh.
No, I forgot to say something really important.
Um, can I?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, then I'll come back. Okay. Lucky I hooked up. Um, okay. The bill passes as amended, and the chair will sign it, and Madam Clerk, please to fix my signature. And Councilmember Herbold, you are recognized.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry, and I, I hope, uh, Madam Chair, you'll find these thanks appropriate because I, although I thanked, uh, the mayor and executive departments, we have to, of course, always thank our own staff. I want to thank central staff, specifically, um, Greg Dos, uh, Ann Gorman, and Noel Aldrich from my office, uh, for, um, just hours of work that they've done, um, to get this over the finish line in such a short period of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We are done with the, um, committee reports, and there were six of them, so we will move on to our agenda. Um, two items removed from the consent calendar, and there were none removed from the consent calendar. We'll move on to J, adoption of other resolutions. There are no other resolutions for the introduction and referral calendar today. And other business. Is there any other business to come before the council before I go back inter-adjourned? And I want to thank those council members that called in from other places. I appreciate it. Councilwoman Nelson, I know that you're doing mom stuff, so thank you very much. Thank you, Councilmember Strauss, for also calling in. Um, it really means a lot to us that you both took the time, and I know you're not here on your vacation to call in, not vacation, I'm sorry, just away to call in, so thank you. All right, not seeing any. Uh, this does conclude the items of business on today's agenda. City council will be on recess for the next two weeks. Our next regularly scheduled council meeting is on Tuesday, September 6th at 2:00. Um, I hope you all have a wonderful recess, and we stand adjourned. Thank you.